We're good if you are.
Excellent, okay. Call this meeting to order. This is the Mineral Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is seven P M. We'll ask him if he can call a roll.
There she is. Okay. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. We have commissioners Blair Bull, Dawkins Lockhart, Lowe Nugent, and Petrino.
Thank you. Okay. We do have a public hearing today, so public comments will be anything other than what we'll be discussing at the public hearing. So this is a time for people to speak. The Planning Commission in person. We invite, when invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area of residence. The timer will then be started. Each speaker is given three minutes. Thank you guys for being here. Okay, next item is approval of minutes. So we have minutes from our last meeting, April twenty-second. Does anybody have any edits or comments?
On the on the minute?
This minute.
On the four point one, for that first motion, because I made I I made the motion and said motion second and five, but there's nobody there. But I think I seconded that motion, and I want to think that Melanie made the motion.
Okay, that amended.
I think.
I'll review the video.
And then my only other thing is on our discussion by commissioners staff. I'm not listed at all, so it's not a big deal.
So with with those changes, would someone like to make a motion for approval of minutes?
Thanks, Bob.
Who was second?
Second.
Thanks, Carla. Commissioners in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll get to our public hearing. So this agenda bill is public hearing for proposed code amendments to chapter twenty-two dot twenty-two of the Monroe Municipal Code Downtown Commercial Zoning District. And we do have a short list of dates that have been discussed. We have Amy's presentation on the screen. And at this point, we'd like to give Amy opportunity to present.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, I'm bringing forward some code amendments. The city of Monroe is proposing text amendments to chapter twenty-two twenty-two of the Monroe Municipal Code. This is the downtown commercial zoning district. Where the the proposed changes are to permit government administration buildings, courts, police stations, and U S post offices as conditional uses where they are currently not permitted at all. And to change membership organization from an accessory use to a conditioning use. As a reminder, this is intended for the area and red on the screen, that is the the promenade subzone of the downtown planning area. If allowed, if 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 the proposals are accepted, condition it would they would it would allow for a conditional use permit to be applied for for these types of uses in this subzone. So as a reminder, those uses have a greater level of review and opportunity for public input that's greater than regular permitted uses. Again, conditional use permits are a type-three process. They go through public notice, public hearing. A decision is made in front of a hearing examiner, and then they're reported against the property. So in your in your packet, there is a staff report. And you'll notice that we did provide public notice. We issued a notice of application and secret determination. We did not receive any comments. The proposal was sent to the Department of Commerce, so we requested an expedited review, and that review was granted, and there were no comments. In addition, we noted we issued a notice of public hearing for this hearing tonight. There were no written comments. I did receive one call today from a local business owner asking about it. And he said that he didn't need to attend. City staff has reviewed these this proposal against the Monroe Comprehensive Plan, goals and policies. The Imagine Monroe and other downtown plans in the area. So if you you may find within your staff report that we have created, we've come up with multiple findings of fact stating how it does need. So moving forward, I want to just if someone does end up making a motion tonight, number four on the screen, on my screen, slightly different than that in your packet, and so you'd want to read the one on the screen and not the one in your packet.
Excellent. Anything else? Right? Yeah, so since our applicant is planning staff, we'll move on to public testimony. I would like to get a motion to open the public testimony portion of this hearing. Next, Bob. Second?
I second.
Thanks very much, Brandy. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. So we do not have any speakers apparently to the best to speak. We had one comment or one one business owner that said they won't attend, so we are going to ask for a motion to close the public testimony.
I'll move to the public. We have one person online. Do you want to ask?
Oh, I didn't see him. Yes, that would be great.
For a public hearing, yes. For anyone joining us online, if you'd like to submit any public comments on this public hearing, just raise your hand, and I can give you the ability to speak for the three minutes I'm on it. Okay, you're good.
Thank you. Sometimes it's a little hard for us in the room to see how many attendees are present. Okay, so one more time, Carla.
Okay, so I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Just need a second.
All second.
Thanks, Brandy. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Any discussion deliberation from commissioners?
I have a couple. I have a question and a comment. On the staff report, this is the time to talk about that, right? Okay, on the staff report. I just want to mention that I was on Imagine Monroe, and on the strategic priorities for the city, they have been referring to friendly and responsive as staff being friendly and responsive. The intent of that wording in Imagine Monroe was actually to capture the feeling that the community members have for each other, where it's a friendly community, where people say hi to each other. Then responsive actually means like when someone's in need or the community's in in need of something, people rally together and come up with solutions. So I like that it's also being used for the city that they want to be friendly and responsive, but I just wanted to clarify that. And I brought that up to Deborah Knight's attention. She she she's aware that I've said that before. Okay, so that's listed as part of the where it's in line, because these amendments are in line with Imagine Monroe on that. And then I have a question on two, I lost it now, on page four. It's talking about it says that there was an error, that this is actually making right, making it consistent with I I think that that seems like it wasn't.
Number seven, maybe?
Let's see. Was that the reference?
Yeah.
Accessory use. Seven A, finding the fact that external inconsistencies between MMC and the Comprehensive Plan and Downtown Master Plan. That almost seems like that was referencing the the last one that we did when we were talking about the Arcade, because I didn't think we had talked about that there was inconsistencies with this. Can you clarify, is that accurate?
It was intended to be accurate, and the reason that we I brought forward inconsistencies in this case as well is that it was inconsistent between the downtown plan that talks about the civic uses in the downtown, and it just wasn't brought over when the promenade was created. And so that's where that wording came from. These findings of fact and conclusions of law will come forward again in the next meeting, and so if we want to make edits to these, because it's Planning Commission that's taking these findings of fact to recommending them to council, we can make changes to them.
No, that answered my question. That makes sense that you said that, because I do like how you do reference that in other in other previous documents, that the downtown commercial zone was to integrate civic, commercial, entertaining, cultural, residential uses. So that makes sense.
So realistically, when we were designing the promenade, we were a little hyper-focused on business and forgot to really think about the potential for, you know, city services could also enhance the walkability and the use of downtown in the promenade area.
Yeah, even though in other documents and other planning, it was talked about, it was just, yeah, promenade focused. Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioners online? Anything to discuss? Thanks, Brandy. Oh, good luck.
I'm in favor of all of this, but I have a concern about the post office being included. It's I'm not losing sleep a little bit because we have a conditional use process. But I'm I'm curious as to why the post office was included as part of the promenade.
Sure, I'm more than happy to.
I do have an answer.
It it is highly unlikely that the post office would move from its current location. If anything else, it might unfortunately move out of the downtown core, but it is a type of use that creates generates high traffic. And so the front office of the post office is a high-traffic generator, which was one of the criteria for the promenade. You want different uses, bringing people into the downtown throughout the day. And so that was the thinking that if they bring their main office, not the sorting, the the warehouse component, but just the main office, that would also apply to a mail stop type business as well. And so that was the thinking to allow it on the promenade.
You're thinking that maybe the walk-in traffic would move out?
No, no, no. I'm not making any assumptions about the existing post office. I don't think they're moving, but that type of a use is a high-traffic generator. So you have like a like a
What about the possibility of them wanting to expand from their current location?
And that, I mean, that's always a possibility, and we kind of covered that for the last meeting. You'd have to look at their conditional use permit if that was something that they were interested in doing.
But I think when we're talking about adding them as a conditional use, we're not talking about making it specific to the Union Bank Building. It's for the promenade.
Yes, so if they move further down Main Street, although there's no vacant land at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. Kelsey, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, with the conditional use permit, we can do the sunrise sunset type thing. When they go to do the conditional use permit, is that correct?
I think Kate explained, I know on that the last reading. Kate, would you like to?
Yeah, so a sunset clause is actually separate than a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit has its own land use process, and it has to show that it is consistent with the goals and policies and intent of that zoning district. A sunset clause would be after five years, that use can no longer be permitted. And discussing that with Director Bailey, we concluded that that really isn't the best option, because then you would potentially be creating legal non-conforming uses in the promenade, and so chose not to pursue a sunset clause for this particular group of uses.
Good. So let's let's get a motion to close the public hearing. Let's let me do that for me.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Bob. Bob's second. And commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Like to have the commissioners vote on this motion. I'd like to have everybody take a look at motion number four and vote on that first. Commissioners online, can you see the screen? Any questions? Go ahead, Brandy.
I move that the Planning Commission accept the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report. Direct staff to draft findings of fact and conclusions of law for planning commissions review and consideration, recommending the Monroe City Council approve the proposed amendments to chapter twenty-two point twenty-two of the Monroe Municipal Code Downtown Commercial Zoning District.
Thanks, Carla. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And opposed, seven zero. Thanks, Amy.
We'll get that back before we go to council.
That is correct. So the the next item they'll receive from us is the findings of the draft findings of fact that that we came to the commission.
So I think I've rolled the votes on the motion and a motion for action in one. Did I?
Hannah says, yeah.
Looks for me.
Okay. No further action necessary, Hannah.
Okay.
You're just very efficient.
Well, I thought we had the votes. So I hit the gavel.
Fair enough.
Okay. Appreciate all your work on this, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is Kate, we'll be discussing the two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive Plan update.
Yeah, I just I wanted to come back to you because we we've had a little delay in some of our chapters, and so I wanted to let you know where where we are. Council's also taken some action that I wanted to bring to your attention. And so in the agenda bill, on the very front page, talks about what you've already seen. Of the items, the chapters that you've already reviewed, the one that's still outstanding is the housing element will be coming back. The consultant team is still working on the new requirements for racial the racial analysis, and then the income bands. So we'll have more information coming back soon. I had a meeting with the consultant team this afternoon and completely forgot to ask the timing on that, so I can follow up after tonight's meeting. And then below that, the chapters that are still ahead of you, the land use, the land use chapter, I anticipate having it by June tenth. The consultants have all of our first round internal edits from staff and senior leadership. Economic development, that is really going through the Economic Development Advisory Board. Deborah Knight is leading that effort. They were supposed to have a meeting last Thursday. Unfortunately, got canceled due to lack of quorum, so they will be looking at the goals and policies on the twenty-third. So you'll probably see that your first meeting in June, which would be June tenth. Next up is the transportation chapter. The consultants will be present on June twenty-fifth to walk you through that, and I have preempted the conversation. Please be very prepared to have conversation around U S two and five twenty-two and why the state and how the state works and the different level of service standards. That is definitely not my area of expertise, so I'm looking forward to having our consultants at that meeting. Then the capital facilities and utilities that might get bumped up, the internal review is currently ongoing. It is possible, depending on how full your agenda is getting, I might bump that to the twenty-fifth, but I also want to leave a lot of time for the transportation conversation. The natural environment element, I'm wrapping up the edits to go back to the consultant team for from senior senior leadership and staff, so I think that will be coming to you on June tenth. And then finally, the implementation chapter, I've got tentatively scheduled for July eleventh. All of this is in the agenda packet for your reference. The other couple of items I wanted to bring to your attention is we have a major milestone. Tomorrow, the draft supplemental environmental impact statement is being issued for public review. There is a thirty-day comment period, and then we will be hosting a public open house slash meeting, where we'll also be doing another land use exercise on June fifth. That's wrong in your, it's right on the notice. I have it wrong in my notes in the agenda bill. So June fifth, from six to eight P M. at the school district administration building. That went out with all of the notices today. I will also be using Peachjar. We'll be doing social media posts and trying to get the word out when I have flyers ready. Going to ask that you all share with your friends and family, trying to get people to attend that meeting.
All right, what did you call that meeting?
It's it will be an open house, but it's really focusing on the environmental review. So if you remember, we've got a no action, which basically says we're going to just keep the two thousand and fifteen Comprehensive Plan zoning as it is today. And then there's the action alternative and what the city, just from a efficiency standpoint, we took the greatest change in land uses as that action. So the council has the most flexibility to say we'll go with a the really big one. Most likely, they'll go with some scenario that includes a little bit of no change and a little bit of change where they feel it's appropriate, based on all the comments we've been receiving. And so what this document does is it goes through and it compares the two based on the natural environment, the built environment. It has some initial, I think there's a little bit of transportation in there, and so it it gives you options to see how that might impact the city of Monroe. And then once that's done, the next stage for the environmental component is the city provides written responses to all of the comments that we've received. So tomorrow's a big day, and then there will be hard copies available at City Hall, and there's also one at the library. Is there getting anything else? And online, everything is online, but if somebody wants a hard copy to review, and you can purchase one for the cost of the photocopying. Next, I want to just walk you through the council meeting on April twenty-third. I provided the city council with an update on the county's comprehensive plan process. They're about two years ahead of us, and they have already been through their environmental review, and we were concerned that we were running out of opportunity for the city to give official comment on what the city would like to see. I found out the county council will actually hold their own public hearing. That will happen later in the summer, but this agenda bill includes all the materials I've prepared based on what's on the county's website. The city council has decided to support the Monroe two Davis Johnson application to expand the city's urban growth area. That's off of Chain Lake Road. The city's position on all of the multi-changes are still in opposition, as well as the county council request to amend the city's urban growth area between Roosevelt Road and U S two. So in this packet includes the first few letters that the city had sent to the county at the beginning of the process. It includes the alternatives that the county has been looking at as part of their comprehensive plan review process. There is a PowerPoint presentation that was given to the county council's planning committee, which has been hosting a series of briefings where the public can provide comments. And then after that is the PowerPoint presentation I gave to the city council. And at the very end is the letter. I do want to be very clear that although the city council is supporting this application, you will not see it in any of the city's materials. We are not allowed to make a change to our urban growth area unless we had made application prior to this process. If the county council approves this change, there's a process called reconciliation, where the city and the county go through a process to amend the city's comprehensive plan after the fact. And that is assuming that the county council approves the change. So that is a very fast update on the comp plan. Dates of what's coming to you. I also wanted to respond, and thank you to all the commissioners who've been sending the edits on all the chapters that we've reviewed. There were a couple of comments in the park plan that I wanted to get back to. A question was asked or a comment was made about the fencing around the Sky River Dog Park. It actually needs to be free-flow. Dogs can dogs can get out, but that's in a floodplain, and so the water, you don't have, what is that, the the type of metal fencing that goes behind it?
Chain Lake?
No, it's not Chain Lake. The square stuff.
Pog wire?
Yeah, thank you. So anyway, a commissioner had asked about how come dogs can actually get out of that dog leash, off-leash park. It is because it's in a floodplain, which is a kind of weird situation. Another question was asked about supporting ongoing maintenance and asset management. The Parks Department has been understaffed for over a decade, and so policies were included in the pros plan, trying to encourage the county or the city council to fund additional positions to maintain our existing assets, which are our parks. There's also a comment about the BMX track. That is technically illegal in the washed-out right-of-way. It is not city-owned property, so I wanted to let you all know about that. And then finally, there was a question about Fair Park. That's actually the Evergreen State Fairgrounds. The county is changing the name on that park, so those are the questions that I can actually answer.
One's Fair Park?
Fair Park is the the address.
Oh, you're just being the fairground.
Yeah, so. And yeah, if you see, if you have questions or other edits, you still have time. Feel free to send them to me. Outside of the housing element, you probably will not see another a a cycle for review until we have the draft documents that will have all the graphics. And then you'll have, I have several meetings still laid out to get us to review the full document. And then Planning Commission, I've got tentatively scheduled for public hearing in October. So rapid fire, any questions? Okay, so documents coming in June.
Okay. That's great.
Yeah.
I guess I do have one, but yeah.
So the June twenty-fifth, you mentioned that, I think you said the consultants will be here then, the transpo or transportation consultants.
So not the MIG from the?
Yep, not MIG. Yeah, so we have, this is a very robust consulting team. MIG is the overseeing, basically the writing of the document, but then we have transpo that's doing the transportation element. They're the ones that prepared the multimodal level of service that I brought to you earlier. Then we have ESA, which is doing most of the work on the environmental review. We have VCH, which is doing the water sanitary sewer and stormwater plan. Who am I forgetting? Oh, CAI, Community Attributes, is doing the economic analysis. And there is one company I'm forgetting that will be doing more economic analysis for the utility plans as part of the the six-year and the twenty-year financial planning.
So the transportation consultants, transpo, they're the ones that also provided us with those documents about like speeding and stuff like that?
No, that's a different one. So it's completely separate from the comp plan.
Okay. So you haven't heard from anything from these data from this consulting before then?
No. If you want more information, I can ask Derek, who is the project lead in the Public Works Department. That is completely separate from the comp plan, which I know, I do remember you asked, you know, could that be incorporated? So making a note to myself right now.
That was the speed and safety or?
Yeah, something like that.
They were given recommendations of where they think that some changes should occur for. And then Trails Plan also had some recommendations for how to calm traffic. I think that's part of it, traffic calming and safety, pedestrian safety. And so it would be helpful if they both happened to have the same recommendations.
I can't tell you, the Trails master plan is being integrated to the transportation plan more than the Parks plan. There's just more overlap with the transportation plan. So you should be getting some updates on that when June twenty-fifth comes around.
Start with our discussion by commissioners and staff. I'll start with online folks. Liz?
Excuse me, I did make it to EDA, I guess it was, was, I think after our meeting, but anyways. And it was interesting, and it brings up, I think, a fair point to consider, because something they were saying, because I was providing some feedback on, just to make sure that all of our businesses are representative and make sure that we're not missing any of our multicultural business owners. And it was brought up that they're providing feedback that they feel like they're represented. And they're feeling comfortable with everything with the city. So not wording it quite as well as they did, but basically it was saying just because our minority communities may not participate in all of our surveys and everything doesn't necessarily reflect the fact that they're being underrepresented. Which I found rather interesting, but they're basically saying that they feel like they're being represented, but so, I mean, it could be something to consider with the rest that we do at the city, but at the same time, I don't ever want that piece to get lost. I think it's really important, just as long as we're reaching out to all of our various communities to make sure everybody is at least feeling like they're heard and important to our community, because everybody is. So that's about all I got.
Thanks, Liz. You got any?
Nothing really for me tonight. I'm sorry, I'm sick and my throat's really sore. It's why I've been so quiet tonight. So thank you, staff, for all the information and hopefully I'll be back to normal by the next meeting.
Thanks, Melanie. Really appreciate you attending tonight. Kelsey?
Hi, everybody. I went to the Rockin' Gem Show at the Fairgrounds, and it was awesome. And saw a missing link to the Trinosaurus Rex, I'm sorry, the Triceratops. It was cool. And there was also a bunny show there, so that was cool. It's been nice to see people out enjoying the weather and saw a lot of people at the river this weekend. So I feel like our wayward signs are working and people are getting out there and enjoying our city, which is really cool. So thank you, staff, for everything, and that's all I got.
Thanks, Kelsey. Carla?
Well, yeah, I agree that the weather the last few days was really great. And I know we spent some time, since we are fairly new to the Monroe area. Really kind of just checking out different areas and sites that we hadn't been to yet, you know, out of the city, out of the city center. So it was really kind of nice. The weather was nice to really get out there and see some other parts of Monroe that are, you know, out, which was nice. Again, you know, hopefully for your, for you guys of information from staff and then, you know, looking at what's coming up and what you were just, what Kate was just kind of telling us. We have a lot coming up, and it should be interesting to hear what's, what's, what's to come. Thank you.
My next, okay, so a couple of things. I feel like I had a blast from the past this last week. So first off, I went to Airway Heights, Washington. And they also have US two that runs right through the middle of their town. And I felt so many similarities there. They have a prison in their town, US two goes right in the middle of it. There's like the rural culture outside of the town where they have agriculture. And then, you know, they go to Walmart and now Amazon fulfillment center and stuff in town. And so they're growing. I look back at their numbers and I felt like, I kept thinking, why does this feel so familiar here? Well, it's about how big Monroe was in nineteen ninety. And so, and their growth also has been doubling since like, you know, nineteen, I think they had two thousand people in nineteen eighty, and now they've got ten thousand. But so that was super interesting to me. And one thing I will note, though, on their US two, they have pedestrian walk signs where you push a button, and there's flashing walk symbols. There's also the pedestrian, what do they call it, refuge or whatever in the middle. And so, and I did notice that the driver culture there was not as speeding through. A lot, it doesn't seem like people are using it as a thoroughfare as much, because they also have I-5 right there. I think that might be why. But some similarities, but also even though they're smaller than us, they had some enhancements on their highway that we don't have. So that was one blast from the past. I get back to Monroe and someone sends me a video of Highway two from nineteen eighty-three. It's going around on Facebook. If anybody hasn't seen it, I would recommend you look it up. It's on YouTube. I think you just Monroe Highway two nineteen eighty-three. So you can, you go the whole length from Sultan to pass Snohomish. Think of, on the trestle, maybe even. Yeah, that's right, ends in Everett. So it's before there was a Snohomish bypass. So the highway actually goes right through downtown Snohomish. It's very interesting also. And I was thinking, if they hadn't have done that, how impacted they would be by the highway, just like we are. So they definitely were thinking ahead when they did their bypass there. And that's how I remember it, because I grew up here. So blast from the past. And then I, that's, that's all I have for those. If somebody wanted to look those up, that'd be interesting for that video. But the staff report tonight that you put together for us on the county planning, that was really, really excellent. So thank you for all that. Super comprehensive. And those letters that I think Lance drafted or was signed, a lot of them, except for the last one from the mayor, those were also very complete and well done. So thank you. I'm glad we're providing comment for, for that stuff and how it will impact us. The other one that was for the amendment tonight, thanks, Amy, for putting that together too. That was really thorough. I like the connections. It's really made me see how we do need to have those. Thank you.
I wanted to say, I hope everyone at the meeting here had a good Mother's Day, if you're a mother yesterday. And if you're not a mother, we're able to at least call your mom and kind of thing. Thanks, everyone, for attending again this evening. It was great to have us all here at a public hearing. The other thing I wanted to mention that we, the Fairgrounds was busy this weekend. I missed the plant sales that Hannah was going to a weekend or two ago. So I thought I'd show up at the Master Gardeners. And the line, it was like a concert line. And yes, somebody had to ask where the restrooms were. They were in the line. It was, I, we, we waited for like ten minutes and we didn't move. So we said, see ya. It was nuts how many people showed up at the, the sale. It wasn't like this stuff was free, but it was very well attended. And I think a lot of people were able to take advantage of the free jump run on the fairground side too. So that was really great. Yeah, great weekend. I see some folks got sun, so that's super positive. Everybody needs a vitamin D. Yeah.
Speaking of the wayfinder signs, I killed staff. The wayfinder sign out in Rainier Park on Chain Lake and Rainier View, it was in an accident. The sign, innocent sign, was hit by a driver in a blue minivan and was injured. But thanks to the park staff, the sign is now being rehabilitated. Staff was on it really quickly, and we'll have our wayfinder sign back out again. Hopefully not to be run over.
So did, so the picture that I saw, no sign is the?
All is, there's no sign. There was just two support posts.
The posts are okay?
Those are fine. The sign itself was damaged.
Thank you.
There were witnesses in the park that, that witnessed it.
Okay.
The driver did not run off. He stayed and rendered aid. So I think we'll be okay. I don't know if the witnesses to the accident will need counsel.
That poor innocent sign.
Poor innocent sign was just sitting there minding its own business, having fun in the park. And a car came up through that pedestrian cutout at the curb, went right through into the sign. I'm not quite sure what that driver was doing.
Thanks for the update. Kelsey wants to start a GoFundMe for the sign. Go ahead, Kelsey.
I actually forgot. So when I was down at the river, I noticed a lot of invasive knotweed. And I don't know who to talk to about that or what, because that is, it, it spreads really, really quickly. And I don't know if I should do that on the Monroe comments, or if that's somewhere to bring up here, because it's already taking over multiple of the beach spots, and that will just like choke out all of the natural foliage we have there. I don't, is there, does anyone know who to contact about?
Yeah, that stuff is super gnarly. Definitely put in something with Monroe Listens on our website, themunrowa.gov. It's just the Monroe Listens icon. If you put that in, someone in parks will get back with you and follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Can we shorten your?
I have one more item. This came across my Facebook. It sounded very interesting. It's support boundary enlargement ballot measure. I don't think anybody's, has anybody heard about that?
The city council, I know, has been discussing it. I will have to, after today's meeting, I can follow up with you on an email. I know there's some concern around.
The Port of Everett currently has about a hundred and ten thousand residents, mostly in Everett, Malcahtio, and some marriage valley, some down at Edmonds. But, but they want to expand their district, and they want to expand their district to include all of Snohomish County. There's some pluses and minuses with that. But they're holding informational open houses, and one is this Thursday over at the Senior Center here in Monroe. Starts at four thirty, so if you're working, you're probably not going to be able to make it. It goes from four thirty to six thirty. I'm going to attend because I'm curious about it. But I'm just, and this is going to go to a vote in August. It might be interested in attending. It sounds, sounds interesting.
Well, Amy?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Kate?
Just a reminder, exciting open house, June fifth. Six to eight PM.
We're gonna have food.
We will have some snacks. We will have some snacks, some beverages.
Excellent.
And the entire big team will be there.
Are they eighteen?
They eighteen.
Okay. Hannah, what do you have for us?
So our next scheduled meeting falls right on Memorial Day, so I'm going to guess that our next meeting is going to be canceled. So just a reminder that your lovely planning staff is going to be attending the upcoming Pride event at Sky River Park on June ninth. So that's going to be from noon to four. So yeah, come out and say hi. I'm going to be doing some outreach for comp plan work, and I know that it's a really great event. Love seeing the community come together. Awesome. That's actually a great reminder. We'll also be at the farmer's market. Right now, we tentative June fifth, the same day. July seventeen, and August.
August seventh, June fifth, July seventeenth, August seventh.
And so it'll be all the material that we're doing at the open house. We'll have game in a bag. And then you'll have opportunity to comment on the policies. That's what we're really asking the community for input on now.
All right, reminder, thank you. Yeah, that's all I had.
Thanks, Hannah. Amy?
We, Lance wants to share.
Lance, do you have anything for us this evening?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone care to, Germany?
Sure, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Carla. Second in. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.